Do I hear a motion to adopt agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and set with the favor.
All right.
Great, I'm gonna get right down and uh get Speaker's Communication Informational line. Uh, it's up to you.
Me?
Or, well, let me go with Brianna first, so she can get back to work.
Um, so I passed out in front of you guys the parade form for the Labor Day Parade. It's the exact same as last year, judging at nine, parade at ten. Um, I met with Officer Grindel, Officer Hill, and ODOT this morning. They'll have the detour set up and the roads closed, and we'll close the roads as well in the areas that are on the bottom of your map.
Okay. I'm hearing anything from you down here.
Nope. Thanks for the fifteen ball.
That's up.
Sam.
Sounds like a poor day.
That's all right.
They know I still.
Okay, well, um, I'm Wade Bryant from several different organizations, but mainly down here, the one you will know is Organ Outback Waypoints. I'm also with State Parks. Um, the advisory committee is still supposed to be a four-year term. I think I've been in there nine years now, so, um, this is my wife, Candy. She just drove me down today. Appreciate that, but, so I'm here at, by your request, as far as I know.
Yep.
So I prepared some things. Hopefully I have what you're looking for, and we can have, uh, you know, a discussion that'll be of benefit to what you're looking for. And I thank you for letting me know. I love a reason to come down here. I love this place, so.
You have a good place to retire.
Yeah, I know. I've talked about it. I've gotta, we've gotta talk about it some more, but it's on the list.
You came before the council, what, a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. We helped, you know, we helped the county with their stuff. John Lane was my, is my counterpart. He's the old man. He's up in Salem, and so, you know, we came down and worked with the county on the, on the opening up their stuff. And we've got, you know, all these kiosks here. There's one up here on Boulder Canyon, you know, they put all that stuff in. And we have all these waypoints. There's just about eighty waypoints out in the BLM now. We hope there's still eighty, but we served out eighty, so. And we'll be maintaining those, you know, getting more data out on that, so. Our purpose was to help bring, you know, visitors to your area. It's a long ways down here for me. I think I've made close to twenty trips down here. Most of all are on my nickel, because we didn't have funding until we had the grant, and that was minimal for travel and stuff, so, you know, my intent is good to help with whatever I can down there. I enjoy the people down there. It's a good place, so. Anyway, so, did you, what would you like to talk about first?
Well, we know that we're legal to cross the state highway.
On January first.
Right.
Yeah.
Next January.
This coming January, it'll be legal, yeah.
But what some people are asking, are they gonna be allowed to drive down them?
Okay. All right, that's a good question. So the answer to that, the short answer to that is no. And so the state highways, uh, as far as driving down the highway, that's no. However, um, in the Senate bill, there's two, there's two pieces of that. Number one is, was to fix the road crossing. That was our primary thing. I was on the big committee where we, where we met with ODOT, and I did all this discussion in there. And, uh, Ken Kessler, one of the commissioners, was on that, on that board too and stuff. And so, our primary goal with, with, with all these bills, we have House bills and Senate bills, or a bunch of different numbers, and they're filtered down to three forty-four, which is now A and B, you know, one's the Senate, one's the House. And so, uh, the governor signed those, and they're all, they're enacted, but take effect on January first. So, the purpose was that we had all these crossings and throughout the whole state where you come out of the BLM, and here's Highway thirty-one, and you can't legally cross that to get to the other side. People were doing it. It's happening all over the place, so. Um, and then there were areas where we needed to, but we couldn't feel, you know, wasn't comfortable doing it or whatever reason, so that's, that was the primary focus. That got fixed. The second element of this is that there'll be a committee formed. I haven't heard anything about when that's gonna happen yet, but I expect it'll be, we have an ATV advisory committee member, a big committee. We haven't met for like a year and a half, a big, big committee, and we have one of those coming up here, um, I think in late September, so, when they meet, I'm sure that will be a topic of discussion, you know, when that's gonna get formed, who's gonna be on that. And so, the elements are, you'll have some local leaders that will possibly be on that, and ODOT, and State Parks, and whatever else. And, uh, the reason for that is that if you have places in your county or within the town or whatever it is, uh, that you have places where you need to connect, so let's say you come out and there's no way to cross and get to where you need to go. So let's say the road comes out and just keys into the highway. Um, you know, uh, one of the places I can think of is in Plush, where we come out, you know, and right now we run down the power line down there, and then we cut behind the high, behind the school, and then we have a little piece of highway there that's about a hundred yards.
Yeah.
To get to the store, okay, to get the milkshakes and hamburgers and things like that, or something like that.
Oh, boy.
Okay. Anyway, so what you'll be able to do is, you know, the town of Plush or whatever, they'll be able to go in and submit or request to open up that as a corridor. And so, it'll either be on the highway or it'll be a corridor access point that'll maybe parallel to the highway, whichever one is gonna be the most beneficial for safety and other things like that. So, you know, if you have places that you're looking at within the county now where that needs to happen to get people into the towns, uh, then you wanna be looking at those, you know, I know I'm not into the town in Lakeview now, but, you know, that's where that's headed. And so, uh, as far as Lakeview goes, you're pretty good, because the county's opening up the roads that access into, into the town, so, you know, coming off of the north, you can come down Boulder, and then, you know, from the south over this direction, you can get into town pretty well.
So, well, it's just like incorporated, so it's just the county.
The county would do it.
So the county.
Yeah, whoever has jurisdiction over that area.
Right, the government of that area.
And they, they would go to the committee, and the committee would come up with a proposal or whatever, and then, you know, ODOT is ultimately the decider on all of this, and so.
So is it County Road Department, or is it the Commissioners, or is it planning, or who?
Yeah, we'll see. When the, the committee that's gonna be formed will come up with who's gonna be, you know, all those details aren't there. If you, if you look in SB three forty-four, it says the committee is to be formed, and it kinda gives some names of some, of some, you know, representative agencies in there, but I'm sure that's gonna filter out, but.
So what is, I guess, maybe I'm getting ahead of what you were gonna say, that, um, what is kind of your deadline for getting your committee and going forward with it?
Well, I, the committee, I hope they get the committee formed before January first, 'cause that's, you know, that's my call order, but you know how it takes time.
Sure.
One thing I've learned about all of this whole thing is it takes time, and I'm not a very patient person, so, um, anyway, yeah, I hope that that's addressed pretty soon, and, um, that they at least get that base committee formed, you know, and, once the road crossings done, and the, and the, you know, the bill is enacted in law, which, you know, comes active on the first of January, then there'll be more pressure to get, that'll happen.
I know when, when you first came to the, or, when you came to the council before, the main concerns at that time when we were becoming an ATV friendly community and wanted to open up to what you were speaking of then in the Parks Recreation Department of the State, who was also here that day, as you said, uh, they were informing us that the connection was most important to be able to cross really both of the highways to get from Boulder Canyon, which I guess is the entry point for a lot of the east-west traffic.
Right.
And a lot of the cross.
Yeah, and from the south, too, from California.
Yeah, and, yeah, and then, and so, that gave us then access to, I guess, points northward.
Yeah.
To Thomas Creek or that area.
Right, exactly. Yeah, that's correct.
So, how many crossings do we need, or can we just cross at any point on the state highways, or it's still yet to be determined?
Okay, that's a good question. So let's, yeah, and I don't, we had a little bit of this discussion in the past, and you may recall some of that.
Yeah.
You know, John and I have talked about this for a long time. My wife and I go to Utah. We've been to Utah like seventeen or eighteen times to ride, and we go from one to two weeks, and down there, almost, you know, ninety percent of what you're looking at is open. I mean, all, we go down, we go down a highway at, you know, fifty miles an hour for miles and miles down there sometimes, but, um, all of their little towns in southern Utah are open, all of them are open. In fact, Utah just, they passed a law about four years ago or five that, um, where they flipped their law saying that everything in Utah is open except for the freeways unless the municipality says it's not. Okay, the only one that didn't do it was Salt Lake County, okay? Everybody else said, okay, everything's open. You can't go on the freeway, but you can go down the highway if it's street legal, which they passed that at the same time. Well, just this last year, um, an individual went in and petitioned and got legislated. That changed, so now all the counties are open. So, 'cause he had a, he lived up, up out of South Jordan, Utah, which is, you know, it's kinda south of Salt Lake, and he had this one-mile stretch from his house that he could go out and access, you know, tens of thousands of miles of trail, and it wasn't legal, 'cause that county didn't adopt the ordinance, and he was able to basically get that change, so. Um, so here's, here's the point. You have a couple of options. Number one is anywhere in town here that you're at an intersection at the highway, and you can cross, straight across, you can do it, as of January first, it's like.
Okay, so that, okay.
So, the next question is, is that what you want, okay?
'Cause that's what we discussed before.
Okay. And so, and the, and secondary to that question is, do you want that for your local people, or do you want that for everyone? Uh, our recommendation to you is to consider, um, you know, just allowing the law be the law, let your local people work with it however they do, 'cause this is your town. And, you know, you, you know the safety issues, and, you know, the, the law enforcement people are gonna know where, that maybe where the places are where maybe you don't want that to happen, you can identify those if there's a safety issue, whatever. Originally, when we were talking, I think, I think State Parks came in and they showed this piece, uh, up here in the turn, you know, from the junction, just this way, from, from the.
This side of it.
The car dealership, which is now the, it's hardware store now, right? Okay. Anyway, they, they were talking about like opening that piece of road, going to ODOT, but, I mean, John and I talked about this a lot, and it would be our recommendation that you consider not doing something like that, okay? What, what should be the goal is to allow people that are here visiting, and maybe your local people too, of course, but allow them access to your businesses. Okay, so, in Utah, what most of the little towns do is they have a preferred route in their town, and they mark them a couple of different ways, and, um, some of them, most of the towns, everything's open there, but if you go on the Paiute Trail and you go into any of these towns, the Paiute Trail map has the route printed on, on the map that they want you to go on as you pass through the town. Now, you can vary off of that, and you can go to a different motel down that street or do this or that, but it shows you the connection point. And so, if somebody's coming down Boulder Canyon, they wanna go out and get out to Thomas Creek, it's beneficial for you as a town to show them the quickest way and easiest way to get there, and to get to the gas, get to the motel, get to the store, and whatever. So, um, let me, can I come up?
Sure.
Let me just show you kinda what their map said, like, he just passes around. This is a Paiute Trail map, and if you look, the green is the routes that they have marked for the general public, mostly that are just there visiting to ride it, 'cause that gets hammered, and I mean, I get thousands and thousands of people there that are eager to ride that, so. Um, and what they do is they mark, uh.
So this little red thing is the mark?
The red is the highway that you stay off of, should be.
No, I meant this, I'm, I'm.
I'm sorry. Let me come back from there.
Yeah, there is this, is it these green things?
The green highlighted is the route.
Or are we looking at this?
Oh, oh, don't look at this one.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
So this is the main map, and like, this is part of the Paiute Trail, this route here, and it comes into the, to the, coming to the town, you look up the town you're in.
All right.
And you, what they want you to do is stay mainly on the green route.
Okay.
Everything in town is open.
But for someone that's passing through your community, that's good to have that.
Have a preferred route, but what you're saying is, a preferred route, but no restrictions?
Yeah, your local people are gonna know they can go anywhere, pretty much, okay? They already know that, so we're not gonna be worried about them, but, let's say you have a group of ten guys that chill up there, you know, and they, they unload their stuff at the motel down here, and they might take off, you know? You probably want them not going, you know, different ways, and so, that's the benefit of having a preferred route, you know? And there's a couple of ways to mark that. You can either, um, you can either put signage up, you know, and have, in Utah, they, a lot of towns have these little blue signs, I'll show you a picture of one here, and then some of them mark, mark it actually on the pavement. So, uh, like if you have, if you're coming out of the motel, right at the gas station, it says ATV route, you know, there's an arrow. You kinda did that for your poker run here on the sidewalk.
Yeah.
You know, so, it, uh, it would take a little bit of planning, you know, and discussion to get, figure out where you want them to go and what you want them to be able to access.
Do you ever see them allowing cities like ours opening the highway inside city zones?
You, you could petition for that, but Oregon is a different, you know, in Utah, they just opened them, you know, they, they just did it. But in Oregon, ODOT, it was a lot, it was a lot of work with ODOT, and, and they were very good in the meetings about discussing, and they were very open. I hope that continues when we go in and actually put them on the spot on some access points, 'cause I have three or four that I'm looking at personally, you know, that I wanna see happen, where we, where we come out of a place, and I've gotta go down, have a corridor either next to the highway or on it for a little ways, like in our area on Highway twenty east, you know, we come out of the BLM, and then we head south, and we ride all, you know, we rode all the way from, to here from Bant one time. And so, uh, we went through Frenchland, and, you know, came up through ABR, came down, but, um, you, you could, let's say you have a piece of it, you know, in town that you wanted to do that with, yes, you can go in, you know, get together, whatever the committee is gonna require from you, you'll be able to put that together and come in and meet with the committee and, and put a proposal in, if you have a piece of ground that you want, you know, linear on the highway, so.
To me, that sounds very dangerous. We have a lot of trucks go through here.
Well, the, the big question is, do you need it?
Yeah, I, I guess.
Can you accomplish?
I have a personal feeling, I'm kidding.
Yeah, and so, like, for me, if I came up to the intersection down here, I would avoid that. I would go up a block and then come in behind and get in there, just 'cause I'm, I just don't wanna deal with it, you know? And so, and I don't want other people that are, that are seeing me come up there and have to deal with it either, you know, and figure out what they're supposed to do, because at these intersections that you have here, you have people that aren't from here, they're not familiar with what's, what the protocol is gonna be. And so you wanna, in those areas where they're, where, you know, I would say it's the higher level of concern, you wanna, you know, probably steer them away from those areas, 'cause there's another way to do it. You have plenty of ways to, to get where you need to go in town here, you know, even though you have the two highways, they, they connect in a way you can get to any place you need to, you know, so. Um, another thing that you could do is, at the point of entry into your town, coming off the major entry point, you can put a sign up there and say, "Welcome to Lakeview. Here are some rules." Okay? So, can I just walk around here, and I'll just kinda show you? Kind of what, one of those, these are kinda not real high-tech signs, but, Two Sharon is a little town, and, uh, they serve great hamburgers, or sweet right over there, they're very developed. All the little towns in U- southern Utah have these little signs that you come in. Some of them are nicer, some of them are just carved, you know, and stuff, but they've come up with a list of things they would like you to go buy and buy while you're there. And so, you know, you could, a mess one you could put, you know, in Lakeview, you could put a speed limit, and whatever else you wanna put. If you wanted to put something, if you have a preferred route, you say, "Please stay on the preferred route when possible." You know, you could say, "Lakeview streets are open, but please, if you're passing through, stay on the preferred route when possible," or something like that, so.
And I'm not sure you've got the letter.
See, we could, we could put together a map of the town.
Yeah.
And mark the crossings.
Some, yeah.
They could.
Preferred crossings.
Preferred routes.
Preferred crossings, and then they would be able to see the streets.
Is there any standard signage that is gonna be uniformed throughout the country?
There's not.
Or ODOT or something?
Yeah, ODOT. They don't, just 'cause we haven't dealt with this in Oregon, there isn't, and so, in Utah, it's not even.
Utah towns aren't doing it yet either?
It's not even standard in Utah, but, um, I suggest, you know, in the past, I suggest that most of the, uh, most of Utah, the signs look like this, okay?
Just put it up a little bit, tip it towards us.
You can't see when it's tipped.
Yeah, well, I want you to see it, actually. Um, so, what they have is, you know, and they also, if like, if there's fuel that way, you know, so it'll say, preferred route, or you'll say approved route or preferred route, and then if there's fuel that way, on that signpost, it would say, "Fuel that way," you know, "Hotel that way," whatever, you know, so that they know how to find what they're looking for.
On the fuel, just on the main highway?
Yeah, yeah, but you can get to it.
You can get to it around the.
Hand it to the shell up there, you know, that's one where you have to have a corridor to get out there. As far as that is out there, and the turns getting out there would be a long shot to ODOT.
Well, and I, I would agree with ODOT on that.
Yeah, yeah, I would, you know, I mean, we gotta, safety is the number one thing, you know, just, number one, we don't want anybody hurt, number two, having somebody hurt could, could, you know, destroy everything else happening.
Right, so is there, is there gonna be some kinda grant for some of the signage?
Okay, so, so the grant that we did to do all this other work is finished, and that's gone, and so, um, I'm talking to Parks, they haven't posted on their when our next grant cycle, is it showing it as, as two thousand eighteen to, no, just two thousand nineteen to twenty-two, but we should've had it eighteen, or we ran out of money on this last grant, so I don't know where the money's at right now with that.
I know when you were down before, that was one thing you also said that you thought you could help us on the signage.
Yeah, we could, yeah, and we used that.
Remember that saying?
That grant, we're outside of the, yeah, and, and we want, we wanted, I mean, we'd be glad to put in for a grant, I just had to figure out what you wanted, and we could do that.
What we need to do here.
The last grant cycle ended in June, and we finished that project, so anything that was in that scope needed to be done by then anyway, so, but, so this would be down the road, and so, you know, that, the, in the interim, you know, one, yeah, oh, did you see that? Sorry.
I just wanna be clear.
Yeah, so they have, you know, arrows showing.
I just wanted to add to the top of existing roads.
Our streets, our streets.
But.
Not on it, well.
No, not on it. I'm just being a part of it. That's pretty standalone, but I don't know.
But my suggestion would be, if, if you decide you'd adopt something like this for now, I mean, I would think that, you know, you only need maybe two or three entry signs. Somebody in this community could probably come up with those, you know, either router them out like that one was that I showed you, or whatever, and get them up. I have, I have four-by-four posts, and we have labor right now, okay? And, uh, so, and we'd be glad to come down and set those and do all that for you if you have somebody come up with a sign till we have grants, and you can't. And then, I don't know if you wanna paint on your street, you know, some of them have, you know, they, they just made a stencil out of a piece of plywood, you know, and just put that at the intersection on the ground and said, you know, ATV route. It says ATV in the arrow, you know, you can go to the right, it points right, or it goes, you know, whatever way you wanna send them, and, uh, you can do that way, that, that for now, if you don't mind having paint on the street.
Well, but with such a, such a mind-baffling ordeal trying to find a location that you could cross under the ODOT rules, because they were so restrictive, you couldn't do it near an intersection that was already existing.
Yeah, well, I thought they were very creative, what, you know, I remember I did that with Richie and those guys did, but what they came up with over there by the fire station was, was pretty good.
That was all the sort of working together trying to.
Was it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, you know, that, that helped, and, so you can do that, you know, you can paint that on there for now, and then, part of the two is, if you have signage out that's, that's very visible, people are gonna notice that when they travel through here, and they're gonna say, "Hey, look," you know, "It says ATV," they're gonna figure out like that, you know, that they can ride their ATV around here, and so they're gonna investigate that a little more, and they may wanna come back here and ride. That's how we do it. That's what got us started. I was in Utah, you know, seventeen, eighteen years ago, and we were on a family reunion thing, and I, I see this guy riding his four-wheeler in this town, and I'm like, hmm, you know, how's he doing that? And so, we.
See, that's what I'm saying, we could do maps, have the routes on there, and all the hotels, the gas stations and stuff, have them.
Yeah, well, and you could put these at the point of entry, you know, if somebody doesn't mind going up there and checking, making sure they're stocked in there once in a while, and, you know, just put them at, uh, put all those real estate holder things up there, and, you know, have the maps in there, so when they come into town, you know, you wanna, you wanna have them feel like you want them here, you know, if you do. Like, my, my first question I had today was, how, how does the town feel about all that? I mean, that was the first thing I was gonna ask you, is are we, are you okay with the way this is going, and has it been okay?
I think basically we're all pretty positive about it.
Oh, yeah, we've been looking forward to it, or I have.
Yeah. I, I really thought it would, with even the local people, might be a little bit more difficult than it has been, but.
Yeah.
I, you know, it's not really bad.
It's more education than it is anything, you know, once people figure out how it works, it.
We've had a few locals that have been both hands, but for the most part, it's been education.
Yeah, well, and from here, you know, I, and I need to go talk to the county, 'cause I kinda feel like that, I mean, the town can do this too, but I think it's the county that needs to kinda take the major role in promoting better, because, you know, I, I pick up your publications, they outback one, and there's, there's about four, I think, that you have, you know, that are the periodicals that come out, and I've been watching those, and I haven't seen anything in there about it, on any of them. And so we've had a year now about, and there's no promotion in there about that you can ride your OHPs here, so, can I, let me pass these around?
I think part of that, the company, in terms of where we cross the highway.
Yeah, I, yeah, I know we were waiting on that, and, but that's one reason I'm bringing it up now, is now is the time to.
To let, let it be known.
To look at that. Yeah, and so, you know, as you come into next spring, you, it'd be nice to have something out there, you know, prepared and ready to go for next spring, and so that.
Well, as we talked before, there's a lot of groups that are looking for, for communities that are, are like.
They are, yeah.
How many across the state have you run into that have joined in this part, because we were one of the few first few that did.
You are, and I need to tell you that today, that.
And then we, we did it, so.
You know, I need to say to you, to, to all of you today, that you, Lakeview, the town of Lakeview and Lake County set the pace for getting this Senate bill passed. I don't believe it would've got passed if it hadn't been for what you folks did down here to, to prepare for that, that, you know, you were the vehicle that allowed that to be a concept, because if we did this way in and, and brought that in with no, no history or anything going on, it would've dropped. And the reason it went is because we had a good history down here for about a year, you know, of things working, so, you know, uh, there's other communities now all over the state that have started, I mean, even, you have ever been by Detroit, Lake, the little town of Detroit opened up their streets, you know, I never thought they would do that there, but, you know.
Well, as you say, right now, the, the funds for this type of advertising right now are, are through liars' tax funds, as you know, across the state for that kind of advertising and campaigns, and we have none here at the town of Lakeview, but we are looking at perhaps enacting one, so that would be one of the major things that probably you would wanna promote, if we had those dollars available here, otherwise the county has a lot of your taxes.
Yeah.
And you say they've got the, the platforms now. enacting one, so that would be one of the major things that probably you would wanna promote, if we had those dollars available here, otherwise the county has liars tax, and, and you say they've got the platforms now.
Yeah. So, Sevier County and Millard County are two, they're right next to each other, you know, and they're only a couple of many counties, but they recognize the value of that, they have, they have this, you know, pretty incredible trail system down there. Down here, you don't have quite as much probably to offer, but I think you have a lot to offer. And so, people are always looking for a different place to go, you know, and so.
The other thing that's helped is the Forest Service and BLM has opened up their roads to ATVs.
Well, a lot of them are, and I, the, the thing that's been difficult for me is that I don't live close enough to here, so I've been trying to work, there's a couple of access points that we need the Forest Service to work with, and one of them is, is thirty-six fifteen, that comes off of Abert Rim, it's, it's the only route into Lakeview from the north, and it's that paved, it's kind of an old deteriorated paved, you know which one I'm talking about? It's up, up there by the Warner Canyon, by the ski area.
Yeah, it heads up from the Snow Park up to Bull's Ferry.
Yeah.
Bull's Ferry and.
Yeah, and so, you know, we got administrative authority to go through there a few years ago when we rode in, just to see what that was gonna be like, and I need to, what I need is somebody down here that'll work more directly at getting that open, because that, that will bring people in from the north that are doing, you know, a couple of day overnighter thing, you know.
But that's the obstacle right now, is that, is the obstacle for people proceeding?
Yeah, you can get to California, but you can't get to the North Desert from town. That thirty-six fifteen's the only route up there, I, we looked and looked and looked at it, so, but, you know, every time I've talked to them, they've been encouraging about it, you know, but it's hard for me when I come down here for a day or two to, you know, it's, it's.
Stay conscious.
Yeah, it's six hour round trip for me to drive down here every time, so, we'll keep working with that, but that's another one that hopefully gets some more local people behind that, and get that opened up, so that we can get out that direction, and, 'cause I'd ride from Ben down here if I could get that opened up, you know, and bring people do that, that's a good trip down through there, so.
And a two-day trip?
It's more than that, yeah, we did, at one time, we went, it was seven hundred and thirty miles, we rode down here and down into California, and then back to Ben. Not a lot of people do that, I mean, it's, that's not the norm, you know, at all, but I think more people, now that we have the side-by-sides, you know, people do more overnighters in those, they go out, put their camping gear in there, because they can load everything in there, and, you know, they take their family out, and they'll spend a day or two out there, just kinda running around camping, so.
Do we have a foreigner organization here now? I mean, I know Rob Thornton kinda got all this started, but is it actually like a club that meets or?
They have one through KVE, Richie Johnston and those guys, I don't know, I don't know how many meetings they have, they're the ones that put on the ATV event that we have here every year, and so.
And it might be good to get someone from their interest, and.
Well, and they are, I think, you know, I, I forget, Richie told me who the new president was, it's the High Desert Stormtrooper, and so, Chris Bishop with the BLM is the vice president now, I know that.
The, the High Desert Stormtrooper's doing, 'cause I know the snowmobile club, are they doing the ATV as well?
Yeah, they have a branch of it in there, so, you know, I don't think they're doing nearly as much as, but I was, I went over and saw Richie for a minute before I came in here, and he said Mike Cuff is working on getting a, like an enduro bike event going on here sometime in the future.
I know they're looking, for a long time, they've been looking at, up in the Valley Falls area, doing a big rally race up there, and I, I know it's come real close in the past, and I think that some of this was hindrance at that time, but I know that they've, they've really been working on it, and Mike's really been working on that as well.
Well, I know when I was a kid, I got in a two-hundred-and-fifty mile cross-country race up Christian Valley, they put on up there, and that was a lot of fun, and I haven't heard of any more of them since.
They've, they've been working on this one up in Valley Falls for a couple of years. I thought it was supposed to go last year, and for some reason it got stopped, and I think it was feeling permitting or something.
Yeah, it was, they call it the Paisley Two Hundred or something, that one that they did, and I think they did it one year, and the next year they were gonna do it, and they had some hiccups in there, whatever, but, things like that, where there's, where you're covering that much geographic ground, it's a lot harder to take care of that, you know, and get that passed, but, you know, what would be nice to see happen in, in Lakeview is have some kind of an event where you can have people come here and, and ride from town, ride from, from the fairgrounds, you know, bring their campers, you know, fifth wheel or whatever they have, and camp at the fairgrounds, and then have access, you know, to go out and ride, and maybe have some kind of event in town, and, you know, you have to plan it a year ahead, so you could get it advertised and everything.
They've done poker runs two years in a row, and that's why the job in the sidewalk.
We've been on it, and.
I noticed this, this one here in this magazine for Sevier County has theirs in September, their jamboree, ATV, UTV jamboree.
Yeah, they do, yeah, they have it at the Falls School, you know, and, that, that's a huge, that thing's huge, I mean, it's, you know, it's incredible. We, we don't usually attend that, I usually sneak in there or ride in there, because I know a lot of people down there will go and say hello to everybody, but, we don't usually go on the riser, because it's buffer to bumper, you know, too slow for us, but, but, you know, thousands of people come to that. And then, I'll tell you another story too, Darren Bushman, I know really well, he's the commissioner in Mary, in Payute County, and he lives in Marysville, well, he actually lives in Junction, but I know him really well, and, he started UTV jamboree about four years ago, and the first year they had like a hundred people, last year they had like seven hundred people.
He wins.
And they put it on, and the food, people don't pay, I mean, they, as a matter of fact, they figured out how to do it, he's really good at that, but they, you know, there's no charge to get into the main part of it, and then you could add on things, you know, and pay for other things, like the t-shirts and all this other stuff, but, even if you charged, it would be fine, you'd come back. You know, if you look down the road, you know, you could have something here, and it got to be an annual event, you know, then people would, a lot of times, people would come back. We have a club in Central Oregon, and the club does nothing all year long, it frustrates me, because I sit in the meetings and they just talk about stuff, and, you know, but every year they have this poker run, and they raise about ten thousand dollars every year on this poker run, and all they do is have people show up, and they hand them a map, and they just go out and ride this loop and come back, and that's all they do, and then they have a few door prizes sitting in, that's it. And they have, you know, they have usually, somewhere around two-hundred-and-fifty people show up at that, and they charge, you know, entrance to get in, it's twenty dollars or whatever it is, so.
And the, what they do out here, they charge you ten dollar entry fee, and then they give, they give you a map, and you have different stations all over, and the wild card is, sometimes that's quite a jaunt to get to it.
Yeah.
You could come back looking just solid mud, 'cause the places where they put it.
Well, we had snow, we, we rode it too, this year I was in the hospital when it happened, so I didn't get down here, but we rode it the year before, we rode it in the morning with Richie, when he checked the route, you know, first thing in the morning, and, it was what?
It was raining.
It was raining, we, we had snow, uh, by crane up there, but anyway.
Yeah, we get that snow still.
Yeah. But, you know, you come up, let me backpedal, I don't know, I'm probably talking too much, but, there's been talk for quite a while, and John and I suggested this, and then others have brought it up too, that, that you form a committee in this community to come up with the plan, because you have the High Desert Stormtrooper Club, we have the town, we have the, we have the county, you have the Chamber of Commerce, and, you know, whoever else, but if you come up with a committee, you know, and I know, I'd be glad to come down here and help with that, or whatever you need from me, 'cause I like coming down here, and, you know, come up with a committee, and then get kind of a plan together for what you want to happen, you know, and you've gotta plan out far enough to where you can get a publication out, or whatever. When we get to the next grant cycle in OPRD, I'm willing to go in, you know, and put in for a grant for whatever you folks would like to see, and that, that could include publications, or any of that stuff, if it's directly related to OHV, then we can put in for a grant through State Parks on it, you know, so it might be, you know, a year or a year and a half or more before we see money from that, but.
As long as we're working towards that.
Yeah, but if you have the committee, and you start putting things together, and, you know, you start getting the word out, and come up with something that's really good in quality for people, then people will show up. You got, you're close enough to the California border, you know, I think you'll pull people up from the south, you know, come here to do this, it's a little remote out here, but it's not that far, you know, a lot of people drive through.
And does the Payute Trail put out a sticker every year?
I know, I know Rod just told me you've been working on this, on this bill for eight years now?
Yeah, yeah, this has been going on for a long time, yeah, and.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, it started, it kinda started down here, I mean, John and I, I was on the committee, the ATV advisory committee, and when I started working on this waypoint thing, which was, you know, about two thousand and ten or eleven, when I had the concept of that, and we realized that we need, we needed connectivity, because that's what Utah has going forward, is you can connect everything, you can go from place to place, so you can ride from town to town. They have more towns, and it's a little more dense, you know, these little towns of two or three hundred people, and, you know, they're closer together than what you have here, but, there's people that would come here and ride, you know, from here to Paisley, where they could get there, you know, and other places, and just being able to come into a town, you have a lot to offer in your town, I mean, you have this new store down here, you know, for families, they can go in there and look around, and the hardware stores moved, and I noticed Napa moved into the other old store now, and they have, they did a great job in that, that's my trade is automotive, so I can appreciate that, but I, I've noticed in the town, since I've been coming here, that things are kinda getting better, it looks like to me, like you've been working on things, and, you know, and it looks good, so I think it's an inviting place, people would like to be here, you know, go, but, just need to tell them how to do it.
Well, I appreciate you sharing with us for the time you've been down here to, to share with us, and the meetings previous and now, and, because we are novices at, at this to a degree, that's new to Oregon.
So am I, but, the, the benefit that I bring to the table for you folks is having gone to Utah and seen how it works really well in that environment, and then I know a lot of people down there that I've met over the years that are in the leadership positions of running that whole thing, you know, Fred Hayes is the, is the State Parks Director, he used to be the OHV Director, I know him, and then a lot of these commissioners down there I've met, you know, that are in these counties, and then the Payute Trail Committee, which is the big committee that, you know, operates that whole thing, just, they have a new leader in there, I just met him, Kevin Johnson, he's really doing a good job down there. They have a lot of input, so, you know, as you're looking at doing things, we have another resource down there, people we can call, I can put you in touch with people down there, you know, that you can call up and ask questions about things.
Audio information.
Yeah, that's good, and, you know, Darren Bushman offered to come here and take a trip out here and work with you, and whatever, you know, he's offered that more than once, he, he was here about a month ago, and, and he came out to the house, and we visited for a while and stuff, he was here for a business thing in Sun River, I guess they had a commissioner's whatever thing going on in Sun River, and he was here for that, but he offered a candidate to come down here, and we're up, whatever.
When you use all the help when you get them.
Yeah, well, we all do that.
You know, it's going.
But if you have a committee, you know, I think that's a good start, but, yeah.
Is there anything in this new statute that requires helmets?
No, no.
I was saying something referring to helmets, but it wasn't real clear, so I've been waiting for the ORS.
Well, the helmets still are on the age group, you don't think, that hasn't changed any, so adults, no.
That's why.
Well, here, let me, let me change that, if they're, if they're traveling on the highway, yes, so.
Yeah, there's something about the highway.
Yeah, so if you get, if you get a corridor passed, and there you're gonna have to have helmets, for then to cross, you go down the corridor, yeah.
Or crossing any time.
Do you need it?
Yeah, let's look at the bill real quick.
Well, it's not to cross.
Do you need the helmet to cross that highway? It's just if there's a length of.
Yeah, I think the helmet is in the section.
Yeah.
That's what I was reading, it said something about the highway corridor, and I guess wasn't.
Yeah, I think the helmet portion is in the corridor portion, which, you know, that's gonna be.
And that's not in effect yet, though, I mean.
No, right?
We don't have a corridor here.
We don't have a corridor, does anybody?
And I think that it's gonna be, you know, it's gonna be a couple of years before we see even one of those happen.
Yeah.
Because it's gonna take a year for one to get on the table, and then it's probably gonna take, you know, maybe a year to make it happen, that's another reason I say, do you need it, you know, right away, so. But anyway, if you, if you haven't spent much time in the bill, I'd encourage you just to kinda, you know, run through that again, there's a, if you go into the, onto the site for the state, look at the bill, they have some like short form descriptions in there.
What's the bill number?
It's three forty-four, B.
Yeah.
Three forty-four, A and B.
So, I don't print out enough for all of them, but, we'll stay for a while, whatever.
Let me find this.
You know, just putting these crossings in town, and when people know, you know, they'll be able to cross, I think the word will get out, and then more and more people will come, come down.
Once people know that they can get a motel here and ride out of there, go.
Yeah, just ride from the motel to wherever.
Yeah, then it's gonna help, and so, and we want to help get the word out for you too, you know, through everything I'm involved with, we have the Central Oregon Off Highway Vehicle Association, which I started, and then I passed the reins over, because I've got too many other things going on, the guy, one of the guys from the Foresters talked me into starting that, and so it's an all-class organization, and it's just an informational hub, and it links out to a whole bunch of Facebook pages and all kinds of stuff, and so, you know, that's one where we can post that on there, and a lot of people will see that, I, I've already done it on there before, but, to let people know that the town's open, but, once we tell them they can, you know, ride right from town, it helps, so.
We might have to talk to our motels and see if they'd be willing to let us post signs, no ATVs on highway at their exits, so they know not to use those exits, because, I mean, every one of our motels actually drive them on the highway, it's definitely.
And, see, that's a good reason to have the route marked, you know, and, I, ODOT probably isn't gonna let you mark it on their piece of pavement, you know, you mark it on yours, so like, at the Fremont Inn, we usually stay there, and, you know, if you're gonna go get fuel, you just go straight across the street right there, you know, and, like you talked about maps, you know, if you have maps, and if they were on the counter.
Well, for that Fremont Inn, you can't go across the street, I mean, that's the problem.
I think you, yeah, you can hit that one street there, I think, right straight across, then you have to go behind the Dollar, and then you can cut across the other highway, you know, you kinda have to go around to do it, but you, but you can do it.
Yeah, if you want, if you're talking about like going through, in between the Dollar General and the Happy Horse, then you're still diagonal and sort of on the highway, which is not gonna be legal. With, when the Dollar General came in, it sort of.
Well, the other option is to.
Go to H.
Yeah, you can go to H and there.
Yeah, you just, you know, if you're going across, you can do that, or come back around behind, you know, and then go across, but see, there's exactly the reason to make the map, so if you have all the key locations on there, say, okay, when you go out of the Fremont, go out the back door to the street, and then cut up, and then cross over there, you know, just, it just helps people, and then, 'cause if they don't know, and they don't have something that tells them they're gonna take the easy route, you know, and that's not always the safe route, so.
Yeah, 'cause see, I come down, come down North F, and there by Schwab's, there's an alleyway.
Yeah.
I go up that alleyway, and then.
And see, that's, that's what I think we should create is, is even from the motels, is having them come out of the back, go up around Schwab, and then coming or second, across and over.
Yeah, and this is discussion, you, you know, you know your town better than anybody, you know where, you know, and especially law enforcement guys know where these points are, and so, you know, you just need to sit down at the table, and, you know, get the map out, and say, here's where we want them to be, and, you know, at least, that way, for people that are visiting, 'cause your local people are gonna do whatever, you know, they think they're allowed to do, and, and you want them to be able to access more freely the town than people that are visiting, they don't need you, you know, they just need to figure out how to get, get out of town, and to get to the, the stores and the businesses that they wanna, you know, get to, so, and at least you can get into town enough to where you can walk to something, you know, if you park, you can just walk across the street, you can't drive to it.
Nothing downtown is too far away.
Yeah, so the only ones, you know, like your Shell Station, you know, there's not any way to get them out there, and so, that's gonna be hard for them a little bit, probably, 'cause, you know, the others are gonna be the ones that get the benefit, but.
It's the same owner.
Oh, is it? Okay, well, they're perfect, okay, that's good.
He doesn't care where you spend your money, he's gonna get it no matter what.
Well, that's excellent, because.
All three of the gas stations are one.
Yeah, and I think you can access, you should be able to access all the motels, I think, can't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, you just go down, you know, you hit the A down there and stuff, so.
Then restaurants, that's an excellent.
Yeah, most of the, most of the restaurants, well, the, you know, you've got the two burger places in town here, both of those are good, and Mario's is good.
Tall, uh, Tall Town would be the only one that would be difficult, because they only have highway, I mean, I guess they could figure out how to post parking, where you're thinking.
Say, you could park down back.
They just have to come up with some signs that people know, that, that would be up to them to.
You know, I'd put places like the Napa on there, because if they have something broken, and they need it to get a part, and, you know, put the, put the Safeway, and then your motels You know, I put places like the Napa on there because if they have something broken and they need it to get a par and, you know, put the, put the Safeway and then your motels and your, and your fuel on there. You know, just those, I call them essentials, you know, that people need that. Yeah, you just come up with a simple map and, you know, it'd be pretty cheap to print a few of those and put them out, you know, at the different locations in town. Uh, plus it's a promotional thing for you, you know, if you, if you don't just print, if you don't just print the map, like print something, put something on there that's with an A picture of an ATV on it or something, you know, that's. So that's a promotional piece rather than just information, so.
Or ads.
Huh?
Or ads.
Well, yeah, and that, that goes beyond that, you know, maybe you have businesses that you, you know.
Well, if we get a few people coming, you know, word of mouth is great too. If you go to, you know, you go to all these things and I'm sure many other hundreds of people do as well. And once they hear about it and if people like it, then send other people.
It was my understanding that there is a, a pretty major east-west route from, I guess, east coast to.
Transamerica Trail.
The Transamerica.
Yeah, but it's not, there, there's no non-street legal trail, so that, the dual sport guys are writing that.
Well, we had issue with, with Transamerica Trail probably about eight years ago. A bunch of guys showed up on side by sides.
Yeah.
That were licensed in California.
They came from Arkansas or something, I think, I, Rob told me about those guys, you can picture them, they, they, it's not legal.
Yeah.
There's just no way.
They thought because the, they were licensed in the state that they're from, Arizona being one, I think California was another one that actually put a license plate on the vehicle. And they could just go wherever they wanted and we had to explain to them, no, it doesn't work that way.
Yeah, most of our bordering states are, are that way, but I don't see Oregon grasping that, you know, for a long time.
It sounds like it's been a discussion, but.
Well, years ago, in the early nineties, DM, when DMV was tidling and handling all of the registration stuff, do you remember that? People were going down and, like in John Day and stuff, and they were buying, they were taking their title and getting a license plate, you know. Then they were writing a law rule, then DMV picked up on that and then eventually they gave that back to parks because they didn't want to deal with it anymore, so. But, yeah, that's, that's not legal. So, you know, just having the paper and other, you know, kind of re-instil, instill the rules, you know. Put them back out there again for everybody when the time comes. And when you print your maps, you know, you need to have something on there that says, please stay, you know, on the, you know, on the road, here's the law or whatever. You can take the short order form on the law, it says, you have to cross at an intersection within, within, or at an intersection or a hundred feet from the intersection. Okay, is the way that is, so if you're, if you're at an intersection, you can't pull out of your driveway thirty feet from the intersection, technically, and cross the high, state highway. You have to be in the intersection, so that's, might be interesting, you might have a few of those in town, I don't know.
That's, that's what's created most of our issues and I think that's why people have been hesitant to advertise and everything else was, we needed clarification because it's just so muddy. I mean, there's, there was two spots that we were doing it, whether it was technically a hundred feet. I mean, I don't think anybody ran a tape measure to find out, but like you were saying, where Dollar General is now, we would go from the Chevron Station to the Dollar General Parking Lot, uh, to go into there. And then we're coming out of the Dollar General Parking Lot into the West Western Parking Lot.
Yeah.
I think that one was even, that one was a little fuzzy, I don't think we were quite a hundred feet away, but, I mean, trying to follow the spirit of the law.
Yeah.
And so.
You know, there's gonna have to be, you just have to work with it.
The way I'm not seated right now though, until January, you can't cross a highway.
Not till January first, yeah.
So even in our community right now, there shouldn't be crossing.
Yeah, I mean, the governor signed that really quick, that, when it went, it was, it went fast, did you see it? I mean, it was kind of, it, 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 it slowed, kind of bounced along and all of a sudden it just went, pow! And, you know, the governor signed it, it was done, but they had it going January first, we were hoping they would have just, you know, with all the time it had, it would have been active, but they didn't. And then, you know, just to, to remind you about what constitutes a highway in Oregon, that's any, really any public thoroughfare. So if it's the alley, if it's the, you know, the street, whatever it is, that's a highway. And that was another reason this needed to get fixed.
Clarify, yeah.
It wasn't just the state highway thirty-one and ninety-seven and the ones that were the problem, it was like a whole bunch of, there, you know, an endless number of highways. Cause Oregon, in Oregon, a highway is a public thoroughfare.
And, and OSP has jurisdiction on all of that stuff.
Yeah, and see, well, ODOT had authority over the ones that they have authority on, but all the other ones that were highways that ODOT doesn't have jurisdiction over were not either. So now everything is taken care of.
And if you look like the vert, uh, city streets, they're all classified generally.
Yeah.
So in reality, we shouldn't be running ATVs on our streets until January for, on any of our streets.
Well, no, you pass an ordinance and you have local jurisdictions, so you're allowed to do that because you, you own the, you own the.
Our highways.
So the state, the state doesn't try to step in, in that case.
Yeah.
They only.
You over, you're.
Yeah, outside of.
You overrode that, you're, you had the ability to override that.
By creating an ordinance locally.
From the way I understand it, I'm not a legal person, but that's how I got it, so. It's, it was totally legal, somebody would have picked that up a long time ago.
But no matter what, the community needs to be educated on the, on the fact that in order to cross the highways, they have to do it at, at an intersection, uh, come January.
They need to do it at an intersection.
You've gotta educate them.
And at an ninety degree.
Well, I think that's pretty much what they're doing now, I mean, and this has been a, a discussion I've had with race teams years ago and, you know, what do we do? I mean, it's, I won't tell you what his advice was, but, uh, you know, I mean, what do we do? I mean, we really don't have any legal crossings, but we've created this ordinance that allows for them to be on our streets. And so, we, we've sort of, in, in my opinion, a little bit of the cart and the horse on that one. Um, I understand why, but, you know, it, it did create some issues.
Somebody tell us.
I don't think the bill would have got passed if you never had that done.
Yeah, and like I said.
Because they know that you folks are down here waiting for that.
Yeah.
And it was brought up many, many times in there, you know, Lake, and I brought it up, I'm like, yeah, Lake County's been calling me, they're wondering what's happening, you know, and when. And, I mean, I got lots of input, you know, from your commissioners and from others, about when, when is it gonna go, when's it gonna go, you know. And so, you know, I always pass, we pass that on in our discussions, it was like, hey, they've done their part. Now we need to, you know, finish it up by getting this thing repaired because now it's a problem, you know, so.
We made it further, it's not legal.
Well, I know when we did our ordinance, the county had not come to grips with what they wanted to do with the county roads. And I'm glad to hear, in fact, that's the first I had found out that they had opened up.
Yeah, they opened up.
So because they followed us on that.
Have you seen the maps of the closed, we, so we, John and I produced a map that shows which county roads are closed.
Ah, okay.
So everything's open if, if it's not marked on the map and, uh.
I know most of the ones that are closed are like the bigger highway style ones in Christmas Valley.
Yeah, well, and here's another thing, too, there was no way to get into Christmas Valley from the, the first time that, when the county first passed the ordinance, there was no way to get into Christmas Valley. Okay, so I started calling over there and, and Mr. Williams, I don't know if anybody knows him, he's like the head of the committee up there, the citizens committee or something. So I started talking to him about it, I said, well, you know, the county's opened up everything, but we can't get into Christmas Valley. And that was one place that we go in a lot, you know, we, we hit from Old Lake, the Black Hills, you know, and we go in there. And then we come in from the north from Milliken Road and get in there, but I, we couldn't get in there. So I worked with them for, it took almost a year after the ordinance was passed for them, you know, they just, I, I wrote, I wrote a letter to the committee. And I talked to Mr. Williams numerous times, he was in support of it, the ranchers weren't, you know, they were concerned. And so I addressed what I thought was their concerns in the letter, about how if we do allow an access point and people are gonna stay on the access point, they're not gonna drive across your pivot to get into town when they get to the, head into the road and they can't get in there, you know, so. And so, uh, anyway, so they, I, I didn't think it was gonna go, but I got a phone call from him finally. And then the commissioners called me like the next day and said, it's approved. So we got Old Lake open from the Black Hills into town. And then we have, uh, up north where Frederick Butte or, or, uh, there's another name for that road, I forget what it is, it's called two different things. But it's kind of the lower section of Frederick Butte where it cuts across.
Sink.
Yeah, Sink Road, yeah, if you look, depends on which map you look at as to what the name of it is. But, uh, so we had from the crack in the ground road to the Milliken Road, we got that open on Frederick Butte or Sink Road. So now you can get in from the north and from the south.
Well, that's good to hear too, because that, I know, I had, I attended a meeting with county commissioners that hosted up there in Christmas Valley. And there were a lot of people who were opposed to ATVs up that way at that time, so they've opened up in that area.
So here's, here's the old map. This is all I have with me today, but, um, this was closed right here, so here, so we got this open. And then we got this open right here. So the new map show those, well, actually, no, this is right, this is the new one, so these are open now. They used to show this red through here, so everything red on here is closed, this is the north county. And that's all we have on the south county, just a little piece on the west side and then Town Hill on the west side.
No, the, so the red is closed.
Red is closed, yeah. And so.
Town Hill Road. Town Hill Road, yeah.
Yeah, and so these are, you know, the Chamber of Commerce has these and we've been putting these in kiosks around places, so that shows people what they're not supposed to. Yeah, have you seen those or?
I haven't taken them.
If you see one, that's what that is. The county asked us to come up with that map and we had funding for that when we were in the grant cycle, so we did it. So, we could probably do, you know, the next version, like, we might work on that a little bit, that was kind of the novice guys building that, so.
Anybody have anything else? I know from what you've told me, you gave me a bunch of ideas, so, I mean, we'll start on them tomorrow.
That's good. Yeah, I think, you know, the committee, I'd really like to see a committee down there and I really, you know, it would be by invitation for me to be a part of that, but I would like to be if it's possible, but.
You should, that could be valuable.
You know, it just kind of helped, kind of helped roll the wheel, I don't wanna say push the rope, but roll the wheel, okay? You know, and kind of help things get going a little bit and maybe we can help get you folks in touch with some other people that can help, you know, give you some idea concepts and stuff. If you have kind of a plan, you look down the road and say, you know, in two years, we'd like to be here, we'd like to be having an event, we'd like to have publications out that invite people to come to town. We'd like to have signage on the ground that shows where they're gonna go or whatever, you know, and you work back to that, you know, it'll get done, so.
Well, I appreciate you coming down, huh?
Sure.
Did you bring your ATVs?
I didn't. We're headed to Utah in a, in a week and a half to go ride down there for a week and, I, I didn't bring them down here, I, but I have work I can do down here now, but it's so dry down here, I'm afraid to go out there, so. I'll wait till the fall, I told Richie a day, I said, I'll be back when the, when the rains come for the fall. We've got some work to do out there. That antifire burned out a couple of our markers up there, I noticed when I came back down through there today, so. We appreciate you folks very much tonight, you know.
Thank you for coming, informative.
Appreciate what you've done for, for the state as far as working on it, because I knew without you guys, you've been coming before us, we wouldn't have had the knowledge that we'd have to move forward and become an ATV in the community, so. Appreciate you all.
I'm gonna leave you, I'm gonna leave you some cards, the only ones I have with me are my state parks cards, but it has my cell number on there. And I, I hope you folks will feel like you can call me anytime, you know, with anything and. I own a business in Bend, but I, I'm in and out of there and I have, you know, a reasonable amount of free time, so. You can email me on that email and then that, that number is my cell number, it's on there.
Okay, we have nothing further, I'll go ahead and close the meeting at five oh four.